Everybody had a chance to look at the claims? Any question on any of the claims?
These are all the same, that's what's in here.
Yep, this seems what's in the folder. Would I have a motion to approve the claims?
Tom Oates.
Motion by Stecker, second by...
I'll sign it.
Carter?
I don't think the credit card claims are in here.
They're listed, not the receipts.
But so, yeah, the receipts he has.
Yep. But everybody's had a chance to look at the receipts. Any discussion on the claims? Hearing on all those in favor of approving the claims, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Who you want to do first? Sure.
I have.
Oh, you got the other? Yeah, I'm trying to get the front one.
Would you like to come up? Twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years.
And maybe you have extra days. Hey, thank you very much.
No, I really appreciate it. And you gotta turn around.
Yep, I got a good picture.
Yep. No.
Excellent.
All right.
There's plenty of people over there. It's all in jail.
Judy! Twenty-five years. Wow, that's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Do you want to stand on that?
One more. One more. You brought reinforcements? Nope, she didn't all tell the crowd it'd be here.
That's another twenty-five years.
Oh, no, no.
Just stick around.
Hope it's another twenty-five years.
Thanks, Judy.
Thanks, Judy.
You could challenge, uh, who was, what was her name that stayed forever?
That was downstairs?
Yeah.
May- was it Mavis? Is that her name?
Mabel.
Mabel. Oh, Emifal. Marvel.
Marvel, Marvel, I was close.
You could challenge Marvel.
I think you have.
Phil?
Yes?
We'll have discussion and approval on EMF's staff pay scale and update.
So the update is basically just a job description, as when I presented that last time, I wasn't aware of that we had changed the structure and how it was set up. So, basically, we just, the job descriptions are the same as we approved before, we just made five different job descriptions.
The best case now versus the two job descriptions we had before.
Uh, there was one change on the critical care paramedic one down at the bottom where it says qualifications, it just says, I'm part of public health paramedic certification. I need to change that to just, uh, critical care paramedic certification.
Did you hear anything back?
Yeah, um, so I talked to Mike yesterday, he's out of the office, and so he forwarded it to Ann, who works with Ayla and Cooney. And she just sent me an email that said that she didn't realize we needed them today, and she's gonna look at them and get back to us ASAP, but I don't know what that means. ASAP.
She didn't tell you what's on the state.
It's about the, uh, job descriptions to make sure that they didn't see anything screaming out there.
So we're gonna have to...
So it's up to you if you wanna go ahead or if you wanna wait, you know, postpone till we hear back from her, if she's gonna get back, then we just...
Well, we might hear back today even.
Oh, yeah, she said ASAP, so I'm guessing here in the next hour or so, but I don't know.
I'd, I'd say the, the change for the critical care to take care of that, otherwise, that's the only thing I noticed when I looked through everything.
Would you be all right with waiting until we hear back?
Yeah, I, that'd probably be a good idea, just leave it on the agenda, leave it open and wait till the end of the meeting and act on it then if we don't hear anything.
What was the change on the critical care though, so I can pass that along?
The critical care one just says paramedic, like paramedic, it doesn't say critical care.
Oh, and that, okay, I get you.
And that'd be a separate, that'd be a separate, um, level service.
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, so we can come back to that, is that all right with you, Phil?
Yes, yep.
Beams that we went through this.
Started this April fourth. Communication goes helps.
Yeah.
I don't think we got the job descriptions to send to them till last week, so it takes some time to look at it too.
I'm not talking, uh, yeah.
We'll, we'll just get a response and they'll be fine.
We should get it today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, if we don't get it today, we'll, we'll have to pass it anyhow, because we're running out of time.
Yeah. Yeah, just, we'll, we'll give them an hour, hour and a half, two hours, and act on it later in the meeting.
Yeah, we're just, we're pushing this to the end.
Yeah.
Yeah, just later in the day.
Anything else, Phil, for an update?
No, uh, some stuff next week again, those, um, policies and stuff we sent last week, um, we did discuss them with the advisory council again last week. Being there were so many of them, uh, we pushed it back one more week from, from this week, give you guys a little more time, give them a little more time. Then we get those approved, I start getting signatures on all of them from the other services in the county.
Okay.
Trying to finalize with Todd on the, um, transfer of assets, I did go to the old city council meeting last night, uh, we did have a conversation there, so I did not see any red flags coming up from any of sides. Um, should be a smooth transition, it's just matter getting, to finalize words in place, um, for Todd and getting that approved.
Good.
So hopefully I can meet with them again today and keep, keep on top of that.
There's, uh, lots to do.
Yep.
Yep.
Every day there's, there's something to do. Every day I think of something else that's not on my list.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it keeps you entertained.
Keeps me entertained, yep.
Yeah.
So after you proposed the job descriptions, then you would take applications, right?
Yeah, I did start actually advertising.
Okay, oh, so then you already have...
Already.
Well, we have to meet the Fair Labor Standards Act, you know, the, the posting and all that stuff, the point of offering positions, but...
So then when do you, I guess, hire them per se, I mean, for July first, but, but, uh...
Yeah, it'll be effective July first, um...
Do we, I guess, when are we, uh...
I'd like to have it, the offers out, you know, mid, mid May.
Sure, they're coming up here soon then.
Yeah, at least have the offers up full-time staff so they know where they're at and not wait until last minute to know what their offer is, what they're coming.
So then the job is, would, or then you would present them to the board and the board would, you know, go through that and, uh, and then they would be able to go through.
I'm sure I have to go through the process of, so you can get approval from the advisory council.
Advisory council.
I'll make that recommendation to you guys to, to go ahead and... I'm also going to involve, involve Dr. Lampy, who's our medical director, um, he does see their skills, he does work with them in the emergency room, so that'll be a key factor too, as far as, um, appointing everybody.
Yeah, I think this is just letting you guys know.
So you just gotta go to the advisory council and then the board, being recommended to the board and then moving forward from there.
And as far as Doc Lampy, it's basically gonna be, you know, get the applications and have a conversation with him, manage person, and then bring that recommendation to the advisory council, show you guys. Perfect. Okay?
Sounds like plan.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Phil.
Do you wanna wait or do you want us to call you when we hear something?
You can call me, please, that's an hour, I got, for you to do this.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay, sounds good.
Call myself.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone.
Thanks, good morning.
Uh, passing a letter down that come from the city about a zoning change within the city limits, and it's, it's advising us if there's a date where they're going to have the hearing.
Board of Justice.
For the Board of Justice. Yeah, so, take a peek at it. And then you're...
Morning, Doug.
Morning.
Good morning, yeah.
Doug, we have one construction in the rideaway.
Correct. Um, type of work communications, uh, various locations in Burke, Portland, um, Union and Plum Creek Township, uh, they are adding on to their system and repairing some spots in their system for communications. We have this all as approval, it's one application. We've got just a list of those on the...
Flowing in on our road shoulders?
Yeah, they'll be on paved road shoulders, it'll be on the shoulders and the, the gravel road, it'll be part of the, on the end of the ground. We're meeting with them, trying to identify spots that, uh, that need to be boring, uh, drainage structures and different things like that. I would grant you that the board would agree with this.
I would move to approve, do I have a second? Second by Stecker. Any more discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Post? Motion carried unanimously.
I just played for the annual banquet.
For Mike?
Yeah.
See?
Yeah.
If you'll sign that, please, Roger. Thank you. Discussion, um, construction. Mariners are working, they're planning to pour their deck next Monday, so that'll be, uh, if, if the weather cooperates this week, that'd be a busy day for our office. Uh, the airport expansion project, I don't, the city met last night, I don't know if they awarded that contract or not, I have not heard yet. Uh, we have a couple of pieces of equipment are down right now, um, a loader, we got an oil leak, that's gonna probably be around a five thousand dollar bill, and we have a truck with some diagnostic issues that are trying, they're trying to get resolved over in Decorah, and that's gonna be five thousand, that is gonna be close to five thousand, we estimate. Uh, ITC Midwest, Elmore, Minnesota, they have a, I think it's a sixty-nine KV, uh, transmission line that runs, oh, I don't know, six hundred feet out in the field for a half a mile or so, it's on the west side of Highway one sixty-nine. They would like to, at the state line, move that west, excuse me, east, to the west road right away of Highway one sixty-nine. And then move it s- south, so south along Highway one sixty-nine, the road easement, that would give them, in case of some sort of an emergency, a lot easier access to that line and also, uh, the owner, more access for farming. Their question to me is, does the board want a drainage district easement for that project? Again, they'd be moving about six hundred feet east along the state line, and I think there's a couple of tile, uh, right in there, and then they'd be going south along the west and west road right away for a while, they jog around a, an acreage, go to the east side of one sixty-nine, go south, and then they connect back up, uh, with the, uh, line that's already on the, uh, west side of Highway one sixty-nine.
There's subsidies, she says, right there.
Pardon me?
There's subs right there by Lakota.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there would be some tiles.
It is a drainage district.
We're gonna cross...
One ten, I believe.
Yeah, we're gonna cross a couple different drains.
Well, one, one ten's right up by the border, um, how far south did you say it goes?
One half mile.
Okay, so yeah, it would be through one ten. Yeah, there's a couple tile right there on the south side of Elmore.
Well, there's a, yeah. One we just quit, I have to wait.
This is a map here.
That's on the east side. One ten. It goes across the road into... I don't think it is Coys.
Dale Price is on the west side.
Yeah, Dale's on there.
I would say it would probably be a good idea.
We'll start working with them to get that taken care of, um, Midwest Carbon App, uh, that's the Subcarbon Solutions, they've submitted some applications to us, one was drainage, uh, road entrances, road crossings, um, I have not replied to them, other to say, you know, with our ordinance and where we're at with our ordinance and where we're at with the Iowa Utility Board, once the utility board and everything else is taken care of, then we will move forward. Uh, however, saying that, uh, Luke Snyder, um, Doug Crouch and myself have met, we are getting some data on the GIS system so that, uh, a case, uh, everything progresses and they need this information, it'll be quickly, uh, it'll, it will be able to react quickly. So, we're not gonna be bringing anything to the board, but we are going to be mapping things and wa- looking at things and, uh, probably with that drainage district easement, once they have identified everything and we have, uh, reviewed and made sure that everything that they are planning on doing, um, has been identified as far as drainage, we'll probably do, just give the board a map so you're aware of it. Navigator, there is some applications there, but that's, uh, road, having to do with roads, and again, we're doing the very same thing there.
And for the drainage side and all that, are you working with Snyder and McClure on all that stuff too, or is that mostly in-house?
Right now, it's in-house, our procedure, uh, we provide them with some drainage maps, they identify where the, where their easements are required, we review that, uh, then the board would, um, appoint somebody to, uh, watch the drainage district.
Well, we, we've already made that appointment with our contract with Snyder and McClure.
So they will be doing the drainage work as well?
For both, CO, well, McClure is supposed to be like the subcontractor, basically, it's all going through Snyder, but McClure is the majority of it.
That's representing the landowners, that's the inch, so they're doing both?
They're doing both.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep.
Okay. Will that be Navigator as well?
Both projects.
Okay.
Yep.
Cause they will be, there will be two, two separate work that they're gonna be doing.
Yep.
One would be what is spelled out in the code section for pipelines, and the other one, what is it, our procedure for...
Yeah, so that...
Drainage district.
That's why I brought it up, it'd probably be good to be in communication with them if they want anything.
Well, that's fine, um, okay. Um, other than that, I don't have anything else, uh, for discussion.
Doug, I was gonna bring this up during my discussion, but since you're here, did you get the email from Craig Schoenfeld, who represents Navigator, um, inviting the board and you to participate in a technical briefing if you're interested?
I did receive a, a copy down there, uh, yeah, that's, I think was to the board supervisors on there.
I didn't know if I should be responding to that, or I did forward it to, uh, Christina at Snyder, and her response was that she attended one in Webster County, and they did provide some plume data, but wouldn't allow anyone to leave the room with a copy of the information, so I didn't know if you guys wanted me to reach back to them or what.
Did you forward the email to us?
Yeah.
We already got it, we got it directly from Craig.
I forwarded it to Christina so that she knew about it. So I, I just wanted to...
No, I received it, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever the board would... I, I guess it's up to the board on that one.
I'll just wait and see what you tell me to do then, if I don't hear anything, I won't worry about it.
I did, yes.
Well, I didn't...
In fact, Craig, Craig requested a copy of that from the next board meeting, and then shortly after.
It's not a meeting, they, it was to let us know that they can come here and do a briefing.
Okay.
To the board, so it's not...
Were you gonna take care of that, or you want somebody to, Tammy is gonna say to you? Good enough.
I emailed it this morning, so...
That's fine, yeah.
This is what it was.
Doug, do you have any contacts for Duke Energy or anyone for the, uh, project, when, Wex project around, uh, Lead Yard? For Jim?
Yeah, are you specifically talking to Jim Ryan? They are gonna be sending him a letter.
Okay, so it works.
What do you wanna do with the Navigator pipeline, do you want him to come in and have a meeting or? I don't think we'll learn anything.
No, I mean, they've been in here...
Yeah.
Monthly.
Okay.
Is that...
I won't worry about it unless I hear some last...
That's consensus of the board, just...
Yeah, that would be my opinion.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
And I won't worry about it, Doug.
All right.
Thanks, Doug.
You're welcome. We'll be back at ten o'clock.
Okay, thank you, and I did get the number from Tim, so...
Pardon me?
Tim did email back the, the number you wanted to spell that, so...
Okay, you have it then, great, okay, great, thanks, thanks, Doug.
Wanna go do your drainage?
Yep.
I'll be right.
We're gonna have a big break this morning.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah, well, give you time to read your folder before Whipple comes in.
I read Zerrin Tractor.
Did you?
Yeah. The nice thing about GPS, I can read a little bit, a little bit like this, but...
Too much of it's written in lawyer jargon.
A lot of it, yeah.
Yeah, it's kinda double speak.
Yeah. I didn't think it was too bad to read, but it sounded a little bit, like you say, I don't know, just confusing language, but at the same time makes sense.
Did you hear any, Roger, did you hear anything more on that one for Bill Mavis, they, you have it taken care of or don't?
I haven't heard anything, the one that's for, uh...
Blake Bird?
That's done.
Okay.
But I think Blake's dad went out and did it according to Blake.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so, he got impatient. I haven't heard anything about Bill, um, the one that...
Mark's in that drainage room like the, um, landowner, so can we go on to auditor and supervisors and then come back when she's done?
Yes, yes, you can. Let's start time with the auditor.
Okay, so I have a few things, um, we already talked about the letter I gave you off this morning, um, a reminder, tomorrow's open enrollment, so for, um, Josh and Carter, we haven't been through this before, this is our insurance update, we have yearly, on a yearly basis, um, and just goes over our plans and any updates or any new information, basically just a yearly review of our insurance, and there's three different, um, sessions you can attend, you only need to attend one, they're all the same, from nine to nine thirty, or one to one thirty at the election center, or five to five thirty at the law enforcement center, so, um, any of those. A reminder, department head meeting Thursday here in the boardroom, um, at nine o'clock. Now, I haven't talked to Todd and Judy, I need to talk to them again, they, um, were supposed to have another meeting at that same time, so they were, Judy was hoping maybe they could do a telephone hearing and they wouldn't have to be gone, and then maybe we could just move it back, but I haven't heard anything from her, so right now it's seven, but if that changes, I will let you know. Um, we talked about the email from Navigator, next week, I don't think we have a lot yet, but that seems to change very quickly in a week. So next week, um, Todd Holmes is meeting with all of us and department heads at the end of the board meeting to go over chapter one and chapter twenty-two of Iowa Code, which is public meeting, um, laws and, or public record requests and open meeting laws, so that's next week, and then, um, the only other thing so far is to approve the yearly lease with early childhood development over the next... And then, I think...
Jack, you got any reports? Carter?
I have care connections for you last Tuesday, uh, moving forward there, and with their new office, Spencer, heard updates from the different departments under care connections, um, one thing that they've started doing is, uh, was interesting, was they're implementing yoga sessions for fifth graders and, uh, for, for mental health patients in the, in the schools, um, and, uh, there's a particular fifth grader that, whose parents didn't want him to be medicated, they, they didn't want him on medication for, um, ADHD and autism and stuff, and, and so, uh, so they're having a go through these yoga sessions and it has improved a lot, and they've seen improvement, so they've been doing that with some different kids, um, Molly Schreiber's working in that area, um, they're doing it at the Royal School, South Spencer, at the elementary school there, um, and then, um, we in Coates County here have hired a new, a replacement for Haley, uh, as our community liaison, um, Marissa Miller, that's her name, and, um, she spent the last eleven years working at EXOP, and, um, so she did case management and oversaw the other case managers, um, working with that, and, um, Haley, uh, Bo Miller was telling us this, and, and Haley, Haley has kept good records and, and left a good foundation for Marissa to pick up on, um, and Haley's been meeting with Marissa and just to aid in the transition and stuff, so she's been very good to work with and, and moving forward there, um, we have a two million, six hundred, three thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-four cents fund balance, um, we have one point two, a little over one point two million dollars remaining to spend, um, for this year yet, so, um, so, yep.
Must move it in bad.
You're right. And then, uh, Anna Miller, with the Adult and Children Services Coordinator, gave us an update, and, um, just called some things she'd been doing the past couple months, one thing that was interesting, she said she was at the Arbor Day Parade here in Algonah, did any of you know we have an Arbor Day Parade in Algonah?
No, I didn't know that.
I've lived here my whole life, and I never knew we had an Arbor Day Parade.
I didn't know that either.
I thought that was interesting. I thought that was interesting, but.
It was me.
Coming from Algonia, rest of it.
You know, the word you didn't participate?
Well, we shined the truck up nice to take it down for Band Day, but Arbor Day.
Arbor Day, I I didn't know that.
I'll put it on the calendar.
Yeah, yeah, um but other than that, yeah, that was care connections and uh just uh yeah, had some, went out, looked at some drainage and um repairs and that stuff and that was about it for for this week. Uh oh, one, one thing I will say is, I did have a resident, um did did I say anything about the Divine Park down by Saint Joe? Before, okay, I did have a resident over in there, um that asked if I would go on a drive with him. And we went over to the Divine Wildlife Area there, right by Jigga's Corner and uh um and it's it's really rough. Uh as far as when you go back in there, there's a lot of trash and brush and and stuff that needs to be cleaned up and and um the the gravel's not very good, you know, back in there, there's a lot of ruts and stuff, so. I I didn't know if that was, would fall under the Road Department or if that would fall under the Conservation? Or who, so I was gonna, I was gonna ask Doug about it and ask maybe Kendall Stummy and see what we could work out, cause there's a lot of people that use that for fishing and and boat access and that kind of stuff, so. Other than that, it's. Been down there, about lost a shock on my car.
Josh?
All right, so um had several meetings last week, the first one was the economic development. Um just kinda discussed some of the, we got uh five active uh revolving loan funds right now. Um as far as business investments, it looks like we've got uh a little over ninety-eight thousand out um for helping businesses and stuff like that. Uh they got brought up the intern breakfast on May twenty-fourth. And then the countywide breakfast on July twenty-sixth. Um we went over a SWOT analysis, which is strength, weakness, um opportunities and threats, uh talking about different things around, you know, the county as far as you know, what strengths we can use for building up, you know, more more of our economy, um such as like bringing in more um employees, things like that, uh businesses, you know, just trying to attract, you know, to come to Cassid County, um just kinda, there was a lot of good discussion that happened with that. Actually came up with some plans, we discussed uh, you know, needing to set up a succession plan as um Maureen is getting ready for retirement as well as Linda. Um so they're they're working on, they did bring up, there was a couple people that are actually interested, so. Um there there's some good news there, they're gonna be working with them to, you know, kinda go through and and get them more information on on what the job details are and things like that, so. And then we did uh emergency management commission meeting, um we discussed. Let's see, we had some policy reviews um for fraud reporting, equipment and property procedure. Uh protected personal information, conflicts of interest and a refreshment policy, we went through and approved all of those. Um approved a couple of the ESF plans. And we did discuss the GPS on the emergency management vehicle, um. We were kinda locked in a four to four vote on that. So it'll be tabled for the next meeting, we'll have another discussion on it. And just kinda briefly went over the budget, um there are some uh bill that's coming down from the state right now discussing some EMA changes, um both to the makeup of the commission to be more resembling of the assessor's office, so um the school board would have representatives, the um mayors and then the full board would be part of it. The sheriff would be made the chair of that commission automatically, but would not get a vote. So there's a lot of opposition to that because the the sheriff needs to have a vote in the commission. Um one of the other big things coming out from this bill, I think, I wanna say it was Senate Bill uh two seventy um is the spending on it, um they're kinda doing the same thing with what we're seeing. The fund balances need to be reduced, so they're they're talking, you know, needing to spend some money down to get it down to that. Um so there was some discussion of potentially getting another EMA vehicle. Um so then that way the truck that she has right now can stay at the EMA building hooked up to the trailer for use, um I think we kinda talked about that last week a little bit, so. Uh nothing further than that so far, there's no, you know, we're not actually out looking at trucks or anything like that. Just kinda brought up in the discussion that if this bill goes through, the um the fund balance has to drop down to like thirty percent or something along those lines.
Was there any discussion of lowering the tax asking instead of spending extra?
Well, the fund balance right now, I think they set us up over like three hundred thousand or something, I I can't remember the exact amount. Yep, yep, so um with that fund balance there right now, yes, I I mean, that could potentially be the the futures, you know, to lower the asking, but that doesn't, you know, solve what they have right now for a fund balance and what they need to have after the bill passes, so.
If it does.
If it does. Um and then afterwards, we had a nine-one-one joint services board meeting, um we did not have a forum, so couldn't really make much for decisions. Just got some updates on the ISIX system, um just discussed getting radios for the schools, they've got the radios, they're just working on getting them programmed. Um these radios will basically be in the schools and and they're kind of in a a network with the law enforcement, fire department and stuff like that, so they can stay in communication without having to um use phone systems. And then there's some discussion on cost share for EMS pagers, uh Phil was there for that. Um there was no decision made, obviously, cause we didn't have a a forum, um. Just got some updates on the GPS systems from Derek, I talked about. Um I think this week they're working on getting the GPS systems and the ambulances. I think that's about all I have.
Karen?
Um Phil touched on the EMS Advisory Council meeting. Um the most of the rest of my week was drainage and other stuff that way. Me and Roger had conversations on drain four, Tyler's here to talk about that, if you wanted to go after, after you get done, whatever.
Well, mostly that's all I did all week was look at drainage stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, intern in request, but Tyler, but as long as we got you here, uh we had a discussion about uh Kyle and I talked together and thought it'd be a good idea if we'd fly that DD four project. Um if anybody wants to see some pictures, yeah, with a drone, I took a bunch of pictures Saturday and drove.
And for your guys' information, when we had the um start of the public hearing, we had a drone flight from the beginning to show the start conditions. So it would be a good comparison for beginning to end type.
I I counted like sixty-six pipes that need to be shortened are put in differently and a couple tile outlets that are.
Need some attention.
There 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 are pipes that are in poor condition, that are, have been broken off uh because of the change in the side slopes, the geometrics of all of that has changed, um.
I missed some pictures, yeah.
And and while I would really like to do something as part of this project, because it is the FEMA funds that we're receiving, uh they don't allow anything to be repaired that wasn't damaged as part of the event, so we have everything that was repaired, we have photos from before and the conditions and the photos after. Uh however, in the discussions, because landowners have brought up these broken tiles that this is yet to be done, um I do think it's a good idea to to get a flight and uh have it serve as kind of a catalog of what is yet to be done. Uh so that landowners know that we're aware of it, we have the documentation of it and we're we're planning on.
Yeah, and and.
Something will eventually be done.
Yeah, and we need a plan on how we're gonna address where those pipes are gonna dump and what you're gonna dump them into. Cause we can't dump them into black dirt.
No, uh that, i- if things are being being shortened and there are ones that hang quite a quite a ways out uh which was appropriate for when the ditch was more vertical, uh but if those get cut back uh I I think it's it's prudent to put some rock under them for uh
Like a splash pad.
Stability, right, exactly, um but that that'll kind of be a case by case, that can be evaluated with a with some drone.
Yeah, and when I was up there and I think it's in like section twenty-eight of Harrison, where Mike Kaler farms.
Yes.
It's a road.
Yeah, yeah, and that's.
He tried to field cultivate it and just danced on top. His his plan was to have somebody rip it and turn a bill in. I I kinda go along with that because when I drove over it, it it's hard.
Yes, and that's I I I uh I spoke with with uh Mike yesterday about about that, yes. Uh and I gave him, gave him some options, uh I said um I I've been in contact with the the contractor and it it's it's kind of where it's gonna be from their input. Uh but I said, if you want something, I can't guarantee that uh some sort of bill will be reimbursed on the engineer, it's gonna be a board call. But I said, if you want it done the way that you want it, uh if if you work it or have someone work it, turn in your bill and that can be certainly discussed and considered. Um.
It isn't formidable the way it is.
No, and that's, there was, uh we went through, just for confirmation, uh our records and and photos at the office yesterday, Nathan and I went through all of that. At one time, that had all been, I mean, it's been leveled out, cause it is, it is level. And it had been worked, the problem was is then they took load after load of riprap down that bank and and packed it all road road grade, um so it it should be, it should be rather clear of debris, I would think, I mean, you're always gonna work something up, right, but uh I I I cannot argue at all that it needs uh to be plantable or to be a seed bed. It would need to be ripped.
It needs more more attention.
The the other part I drove on was some of Ray, between Ray and the pavement and the highway. Some of that ditch bank, not real level.
The.
Where the little bridges on the golf course.
Horse, back behind there.
Oh, okay.
Go west.
Towards one sixty-nine.
Towards one sixty-nine, some of that wasn't real.
Okay, are you talking on the on the north side, on the north side by the lagoons?
Yeah.
I've wrestled with that for a long time because it it it's difficult to get it as level as we would want it without pushing more spoiled material and we're already down to the lagoon's fence there.
About about the only way to probably do it right would be to take that fence out, push everything down in there and you'd rebuild the fence about two feet higher.
Yeah, it's just not very, it doesn't look like a very professional job.
It's it that that, through that stretch, I will agree, it's it's rather bumpy and undulating. Um that was kind of the concession we came to with the the lagoons being being so close there, so.
And then Edward Stein, I told him he's had some issues with you and and as far as picking up uh rock and stuff, and I said, take photographs, bring them into the closing and then the board will make a decision on whether we should pay Ed for doing some of his pickup or not.
Yes, there was, and I had discussions with Ed last fall, uh he was concerned about uh the the cleanup and because of this project being extended on, um I I let him know that the contractor would be required to go in and pick up that debris. Uh but he he chose, uh because he 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 was leery of that. Uh he chose to do it on his own, so I have uh I'd let him know that exact same thing about keep track of your time and and the effort you have into it and it can be considered at the completion hearing.
Yeah, and uh and Don McGregor both called and were, or I talked to both of them. And they had issues with the pipes and wanted to know what we were going to do. And so, being as I had four people that talked to me about the condition of the pipes, I think it'd be appropriate to fly it. Show all the people that come to the closing what we have to deal with and make a plan on how we're going to address the issues. Without a visual, I think it's hard to explain.
Well, we could be here for a while at the completion hearing, trying to describe what we're trying to do.
Right.
When we could just throw it right up, throw it right up there, I I totally agree, those, if a picture's worth a thousand words those drone flights are are, you can't put price on them, so.
Yeah.
It's general consensus of the board to do what we just talked about for drainage, DD four.
Yep.
Anybody have any objections to it? We'll let the minute show that we we agree that uh DD four is going to need some visual.
Drone flight.
Drone flight.
Great, we'll get it flown.
Yep, and then make an accurate count, cause I did a accurate count. I I'd say I, there was sixty-six that needed attention that I saw, I think there's more.
Uh yeah, what what uh what we'll do is when it processes out the the video um they, our GIS department puts it with an actual interactive map
Right.
that'll show and they can, they can pin on a map where every one of those is. And then I'll go through and I can review each location and and have an idea of broken, too long.
Right.
Uh too short.
And there's some laying in the bottom that broke off, you gotta be picked up.
Right, there are, there are ones that are, there are ones that have broken off that are laying next to ones that they aren't the ones that they broke off from, so.
And can you get a count on the ones that you put in new and the ones that Ritzel put in like five years ago, four years ago? They're telling me they're all new and I I disagree with that.
No, they're they're definitely not all new, and there's some that broke off.
I can tell you all of the nice shiny new ones, but I can't tell anything.
Okay, but we should get a the new ones so that we can, they're telling me that those are new pipe and I disagree.
Right, and I I have, we have a log of all of the locations and sizes and all of that stuff, so.
And and there's even pipes out there that I've seen that are old and rusty that wouldn't have even been replaced in Ritzel's project. So they were, they would have been before that, like that they were broke, that they were from, so. Yeah, there's there's definitely a mixture out there.
Perfect.
You're gonna get a hold of Jim someday and try and figure out, I don't know what he was talking about.
I've talked to, like I said, I talked to Keith a bunch and we're gonna try and look at that this summer if they can find where water's swollen, so, yeah.
You you talked about a tile outlet.
It's and it's one I think we've looked for, we had the contractor look.
They looked for quite a while, I believe.
It, yeah.
But they couldn't, they couldn't find a tile, they couldn't find water coming through the bank and and they didn't have a real great idea on location either, it was a somewhere in this area, so.
I did document, but there's one spot where I seen water coming out of the bank without an outlet. I did document, but there's one spot where I seen water coming out of the bank without an outlet.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll find it when you do the drone foot, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause it's uh.
It's one of the things that show up.
Right, yeah, you could, you can see them, uh in, in my mind, I'm thinking it's.
It's, it was on the north side of the bank and it was probably two miles up from Bancroft.
Okay, okay, that gives me, that narrows the thirteen miles down a loop, that narrows it down just a little bit. That, that tells me what part of the hate stat to look for that needle in.
Yeah, we'll, we'll find it now, I think, as tile start working.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, yep, that's uh, and I'll, I'll have them, I'll have them fly it nice and low and, and. It, it's all high-res video too, so it's.
And then, I'm gonna say anybody can drive it, but there is corn planted, so you had to turn around some places and.
There's, there's, yeah, there's stuff that's reseeded back to CRP, there's stuff that's probably got corn in it.
At this point, at this point, road crossing to road crossing is the best way to.
Yeah.
To deal with that and just aerially, so.
Yeah, yeah, unless you go out with a side-by-side or four-wheeler and drag the whole thing.
Right, e- even that, you're.
But you only get one side, that's my problem, then you have to get out all the time and look down the bank to see.
Do, be doing one of these, yeah, I get it. Perfect, well, we'll get right on it.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, yeah, you bet.
You go back to repair requests?
Oh, let's do this a minute with, Tammy sent us an email, let's get this done.
Well, let's, we have to call Phil to come over, so let's do Marge.
Okay.
Bless your drainage.
Then we will do drainage. Yeah, call Phil and have him come so we can.
Tammy, you know what his number is.
Yeah, I'll call him.
It's right here, you just hit six twenty.
And he said it called us so far, so.
Okay.
I'll call him so far.
Kyle gets lunch. I'll, I'll share. Carter.
Okay, thank you.
Carter.
Yeah, uh I had two repairs, first one number twenty is in section twenty-eighth of Sherman Township. Um it's a broken tile, needs repaired for Dean Gorman and I, I went and looked at it.
What number is it?
Uh it's at number twenty. And then. Number twenty-one for Tom Fisher, there's a broken tile on the field that, that need repaired there as well, it was on. Lateral. Off the main there and. Yep, that was the one with that one.
Josh?
Uh I guess that was the second fourteen Sherman as well.
Josh, you taking care of your repairs?
No, yeah.
Okay, Stecker?
Uh I got nineteen is in Springfield, section thirteen for Lucas Zeichenberger outlet pipes. Number twenty-three Springfield fourteen, Bill Mavis, broken tile. And twenty-four is in Lincoln fifteen, broken tile for Blackbird.
That one's been finished.
Yep.
And I got one, it's number twenty-two, it's in uh Germantown ship. Section nine, it's a twenty-inch tile that's broken. And Brad's supposed to be there fixing it one of these first days and it's a Beamer family farm and it's farmed by banks and it's. Do I have a? Motion by Jack and a second by?
I'll second.
Actor. For the supervisors to take care of their repairs. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carried unanimously.
That's about all we've provided for repairs.
We'll get you one yet, John.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I don't like you feeling left out. We have an email from Tammy on the wage from, for the EMS.
Phil was gonna quick print out the email and then come right over, so he should be here soon.
I did forget to mention, uh tonight is the Cassup County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Right.
The J E O. Representative is gonna be there to go through um updates, changes and, and. Any additions or anything like that to the, to our current hazard mitigation plan.
What time is it?
Six o'clock. And they are bringing pizza, so.
Thank you, Marge.
Yep, thank you, Marge.
You don't have to run away, you can stay, you know.
Okay, I got you.
Thanks, Marge.
When it's ten o'clock, uh. Phil's on his way.
Yeah, he said he decided to print out the.
Do you know Kyle, what was changed in this, anything?
Um, no, I, I didn't do any work on that, um Phil would have put that together, but. The, the biggest thing probably would be the qualifications, like she did say in the email, and they're all, like, it's. It's probably not detailed very clearly in the job description itself, but if you reference back to those. Like I have a Department of Public Health paramedic certification, that would have all your specifics, so I would say it's. It's a, it's a reference in there, it's otherwise you'd have pages and pages for the job description. So it, it, it would separate their qualifications fairly clearly with those references, I would say. I don't know if, like in that email, she said. Other duties as far as maintaining equipment and stuff, um and. I think. Answer this better, but I think they're all responsible for driving ambulances as the need arises.
We have daily tasks, inventory, cleaning.
But that kinda applies to everyone, doesn't it?
Everybody, yes.
So I mean, you're, you're probably not going to have much difference in those duties.
So, really, did they change anything you want?
She hasn't changed anything in hers, she's just applying to the email.
Based on her, based on her email.
And, and Phil, I said this just a little before you came in, but I said, like, the qualifications doesn't really have it. Laid out the differences between there, but if you reference back to those. Um I have Department of Public Health certifications, that's where it would really be different.
You know, on the sentence. Sorry, I grabbed all my stuff to go see Ty, but I was done here too, so I kinda got a pile there, but. Under that, on the job description where it says and talks about the protocols and the um scope of practice. And it says um. Has understanding or I don't know what the exact wording is on that, but we could add, and the ability to perform set skills and procedures. Based on level certification, I mean, we could add that in there, but it's all spelled out in that scope of practice and protocols. What they can function at at each level.
Well, they can't go above their scope of practice anyway, so I don't know that we need to say it ten times.
So EMS personnel all function underneath a medical doctor's license. And they have to follow the medical director's scope of practice, which lays out what they can perform at their certification laws and follow the I O S scope of practice. So they have those guidelines that they have to follow and it, it truly specifies what each level can do.
Yeah, that's, that's not something we're gonna change.
Right.
So I am at the point where, would, would I have a motion to approve the staff paid scale on the updated EMS staff job descriptions?
I'll make a motion for that.
Mr. Stecker makes the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Bill Actor, any discussion?
So the job description we're leaving as presented?
Well, you have to make the change for critical care, but other than that.
Other than that, it's.
In any language, yeah.
No, cause the qualifications would separate them.
Yeah. I'm good with it, everybody else? Although, oh, let's do a roll call, though, we haven't done that yet today.
Black?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Black to?
Yes.
Second?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes. Thank you.
I could have read them too right there.
What's that?
I could have read them all there.
I forgot, we could have had Phil read this, all I have.
We, we do have fifty-seven minutes to go here, so if you wanna. I think, I think we have better things to do with our time and I'm pretty sure you do, so.
Thanks for coming back, Phil, appreciate it.
I was going down to C five and I was kinda worried seeing all these people going upstairs for jury duty that he was gonna be tied up. Said he's available.
Okay.
Thanks, Phil.
Yeah.
Jury duty.
Yeah. Well, let's go take a ten-minute break at least and come back and, and I would appreciate it if you'd go through your. Binder and find any questions that you would like to ask Mr. Whipple.
Yep.
It's now the time to do it.
Well, I've made notes.
Good, thank you.